Okay. So why we just get this today? Why we just get this today? I need time. Second, you time, I go with this stuff. You are many different. You should. Proving this what's going on.
All righty, we're gonna have a public hearing. Number one, adoption of ordinance number four two seven eight and ordinance amending the code of ordinance, chapter eleven, garbage, trash, weeds and waste. Article three, weeds and grass, section eleven, five eight, one, hay baling. Does anybody wish to speak on that particular audit, ordinance? Okay. All right, number two, adoption of ordinance number four two seven nine and ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six general fund budget.
Mayor, we have a card here for that agenda item. Rodney Jackson.
Um, I stood to share with this board, with the mayor, with all respect for all of you guys. I think we're, we're going back and forth on a budget that to me is pertinent to the citizens of Gonzalez. Um, I think everybody here, if they own a home or whatever, they're paying for fire, they're paying for police. And if not, if we're not gonna approve a budget that's gonna include those things that are very important to the, to the city, you know, we need to figure out what's going on. I don't know what's going on with the whole body here. Uh, are you guys conversing? Are you guys meeting? But how are we going this long without a budget? It's embarrassing. Uh, everybody's talking to the media and you guys are not meeting and talking with each other, obviously. Uh, you can't do nothing via email to that level. Uh, it's one thing to send an email to somebody, but you, you guys need to sit down in a room and, and come to an agreement whether someone has to give up something to make it work, but you gotta make it work. What's going on now is just, it's unprofessional. It's silly politics. Uh, I'm, I'm just putting this out there because I don't have no allegiance to whatever. I'm just speaking in general for all of us as citizens that this is embarrassing on the news, whether it be media, print. I mean, we all, Gonzalez is all over the news for something that I've never seen Gonzalez on the news for budgets. So what's the problem? Why you guys can't sit down and talk or go through this stuff, um, face to face? That's how you take care of business. So y'all, you know, that's, that's the only reason I rose to say that because somebody needs to say it. And, and whether you guys like it or don't, it's, it's crazy. All right, so that's what I wanted to tell y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Adina Perkins.
Hi, my name is Adina Perkins. I'm a resident of Gonzalez for three years and eight months now. I agree to everything the man said there before me. I hear on the news, I don't understand because y'all vaguely speak about positions or jobs but you don't, I don't hear what the jobs are, who, who, um, is up for the jobs and why is it, other than saying that the city council didn't vote on, but I don't even know what the jobs are. So maybe the citizens knew what you were talking about. It may be a little bit easier to get everybody to come together on one page because I'm, I'm, I'm lost. Like, I'm, I'm purchasing a home, um, I don't work in the city or the parish. Uh, that's a whole nother story. But I, I am an active citizen in this community and I have been since the, I moved here on a Monday, on a Sunday, I was in a city council meeting that Monday and the first person I met at the council was Tim Riley. So I'm very active and I'm, I want to be aware of everything because this is supposed to be a transparent administration, right? So I want to be made aware of what these jobs are, who's up for these jobs and who don't like who and why, why can't we move forward? That's all I have.
Next will be Maria Truitt.
Hello, you're here. My name is Maria Truitt. Um, I have a little accent, but I think you can understand anything that, everything that I'm gonna talk. And one thing that I'm gonna start and I'm concerned about it, I've been here about twenty-five years. There was another mayor before and we never go through this. We never had to wonder if we're gonna have money to pay the city to take care of us, to be secure. We never had that fighting between you. We decide, you know, we both for most of you because we trust that, that you're gonna do a good service for us, a good, and we're gonna have a good benefits. But like, people say, it's a change what happening here. We here to grow and we growing and by that give you something like, you know, what people thinking about all of that, they see it on the news. We supposed to work together and when we elect you, that was for the people, by the people and with the people. But it look like you working, you know, it's just three people that are working for them. The three people that don't, um, they don't want, I don't know what happened, what's wrong, but this is not about you, this is about us. And we want some, some answer and we don't want a questioning what gonna happen in November when we don't have enough money, when you have, we give you the power for you to do something for the, and make us feel more safety, better. That's it, you know, just put, talk to each other and remember that you working for us. We paid you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Gregory Dubose.
Good evening, folks. I'm Greg Dubose. I live here in Gonzalez. I've been here since twenty fourteen. I'm neighbors with the mayor, go to church with Kurt. I know two or three of the customers and I'm very good friends with the mayor. Reason why I'm here, I want to tell you a short story about what I do. Since twenty seventeen, I participated with a group of men called Men of Character and we go to the elementary schools in Gonzalez and we speak to the young people, ten-year-old voice, and we teach them character. The things that I talk to them is about is treating others with dignity and respect. Another thing I talk about is learning how to avoid and identifying peer pressure and also that bullying is a cancer that kills our society. I'm not gonna tell you, I've read all the things that you guys have said, uh, in the media and I wasn't elected to your position and you have people to represent, but all I'm asking you is to treat each other with dignity and respect. You understand? Understanding what peer pressure means and if you're not a victim of it and please don't allow anyone to bully us. Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna open up the regular meeting. So call to order.
Lord, may your goodness and love be present among us today. Blessed city Gonzalez with unity, hope and vision. We give you thanks for the many gifts you have given us. We ask for your guidance and ask that you building us all a deep respect for one another. Please watch over our firemen, police, city workers and all the residents of Gonzalez. We access in your name. Amen.
Of the United States of America and consider republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Tier, roll call. Roll call, Ms. Tier.
Here.
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 Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add discussion to talk about interim city clerk.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Before we go on with this, um, I think this should be a private conversation.
It's just a discussion. If we gonna be transparent about, we just discussing the interim clerk, not saying we appoint nobody or anything of that nature.
Okay, so what is it, just questions?
Just, just talking.
General questions?
General questions about, that's all.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that if it's just general question.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. All right. Do it at the end?
Yeah, we do it at the end.
Okay. Number five, approve the minutes of a special meeting of the mayor and the city council taken on Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Make the motion to approve.
A second.
Yes.
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 Number six, approve the minutes of a regular meeting of the mayor and the city council taken on Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Make the motion to approve.
A second.
Yes.
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 Number seven, approve the special event permit of Trinise Farr of Hands and Hearts LLC to have a Hallelujah Parade Truck Expo Driving Futures for our children on Saturday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, from ten AM to five PM at the Bass Pro twenty-two-hundred West Cabela Parkway.
It's hauling pride?
It's hauling pride. Um, it's actually art, uh, an event that's gonna take place with eighteen-wheeler tractors that's gonna, um, be presented on site of Cabela's, which is now the Bass Pro Shop. And at that event, um, it's gonna be a contest that's actually gonna be judged by the children and it's gonna be considered a People's Choice Award by the trucks that are gonna actually be, um, entering into the contest.
I'm making the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Need a roll call vote?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Okay, number eight, approve mayor's recommendation to appoint Preston Landry as the provisional fire chief.
Guess I'm here to, after the mayor's appointment, answer any questions you may have.
I'm fine. Have you been with us for what, twenty-two years?
Uh, twenty-four, actually five years as a volunteer fireman before we created the paid fire department. And, um, whether it's me or somebody else, we got big shoes to fill with the last two fire chiefs becoming the state fire marshal and now the superintendent of the state fire academy, so, uh, sounds like I better do some, it sound like I better do a good job.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Yes.
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 Mayor, council, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number nine, approval to opt-in to allow the expedient temporary housing assistance through G O H S E P in the event of a major disaster or an emergency.
We didn't last year, we didn't go with this because I forgot what Jackie said. It was something to do with trailers and for the ordinance of the city, I believe. Because, uh, we got a copy of it right here, we opted out of. I don't remember if we said that we would look at it when the time would come. But I think on our ordinance, we can't have that temporary housing.
I think that's correct.
I think that's why we did it like that last year.
This is in case of an emergency.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
But I think the way the ordinance reads, we can't, we'd have to change ordinance, if I remember right.
There's all this proof here. To see exactly what the discussion was and if that's the case, you know, that's valuable to bring back to.
And I'll take a look at the ordinance and let.
Check and see, because I mean, we'd have to. There was a reason we didn't go with it last year and I don't remember why.
The parish, you just passed the same version at their council meeting, so they probably have some materials if you need.
Okay, I'll talk to them. Just look at it, but then I, I moved it.
Make a motion to table it, point attorney review there.
I second it.
Okay, Ms. Tier. Motion and second.
Yes.
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 Number ten, approve the supplemental tax order from McKim and Creed in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-five thousand to complete the Kennedy Heights Drainage Improvement Project.
Mayor, council, take any questions?
Mayor, council, take any questions you certainly have. We received a request by McKim and Creed for the additional dollar figure you see there, $21,135,000, to complete the plan set for Kennedy Heights Phase Two. So in conversation with McKim and Creed, what we have come to understand is that initial plan set that they completed under the expedited Phase One appears to have never been captured in their contract. So we've done our due diligence with McKim and Creed, looked at what that effort would have cost based off the cost of that initial Phase One. We believe the proposed compensation is more than fair. So we did submit a recommendation to the administration to approve this request. Certainly at y'all's pleasure. I will mention, we also have Nick Scheck Snyder with us here from McKim and Creed to take any detailed questions, should you have any, on the technical project itself.
What phase we at in this one?
So this would be considered Phase Two.
Two?
Yes.
One's completed, right?
One is completed.
There's two, is it another phase after two?
No, so.
It's just two, right?
Yeah, and we, certainly Nick, if you want to come up, but Phase One was completed. Phase One is the expedited initial phase that was done. Phase Two would be completing the remainder of Kennedy Heights.
I make a move to approve it. A second.
A roll call vote, Councilwoman Cynthia Gray James.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laver.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Boudreaux.
Yes.
Thank you.
Number 11, final vote on ordinance number 4278 and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 11, Garbage, Trash, Weeds, and Waste, Article 3, Weeds and Grass, Section 11-581, Hay Baling.
We didn't make a motion.
You want to get it first, a second?
Got to make a motion first. I make a motion to approve ordinance number 4278 and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 11, Garbage, Trash, Weed, Waste, Article 3, Weeds and Grass, Section 1158, 1, - Hay Baling.
A second.
Okay, roll call vote, Councilwoman Cynthia Gray James.
Yes.
Councilwoman Turner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laver.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Boudreaux.
Yes.
Number 12, final vote on ordinance number 4279 and ordinance adopting the physical year 2025-2026 general fund budget.
Okay, I'd like to move to introduce an amendment to the proposed annual general budget of the City of Gonzalez Physical Year 2025-2026 by adding Pages 8A, 8B, 9A, 10A, 10B, 10C, 11A, 12A, 13A, 14A, 17A, and 18A, attached in order to provide itemized budget salaries for each specific department position, all to include in the proposed budget. I have a copy for everybody, should be on your desk.
It's just the current salary?
Yep.
For everyone? Current salary for everyone.
So that's the chart we got.
So this just itemizes every administrative position, it does not substantially change the budget?
Correct.
A second.
One question.
Okay.
Mayor, have you reviewed it?
You know, ma'am, I have not. This is my very first time seeing this document.
Okay, I think we need to make sure.
Yep.
Every position.
Very first time.
Every position is included?
Yep.
No one was omitted? No position was omitted?
Except for the four that he asked for.
Except for the four.
That he was asking for in the budget, which is not a substantial change to the budget.
So this, so this basically, the conversations and discussions we've been having period between one another via email and everything. This budget, as you stated, it has all the positions minus the ones we have. Or I know, I looked at it, looked at this just now, and it has, minus the positions, I know that I. Well, I ain't gonna say that I, by the ordinance, it's not, not legal by the ordinance.
Correct.
Pertain to our ordinance, those positions not in there.
Correct.
Because they had to be voted on by the council, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I would at least like to look over it. I hadn't had a chance to look over it.
We're gonna introduce it, you know? You know? It's not, it's, it's the, it's the sheet that we got. And we, I just broke it down. Police, everybody.
The positions that you, that we discussed about are, the positions pertaining to our ordinance that's not legal by that is the removal, removal of Chief of Staff, the Purchasing Manager, Warehouse Associate, Business License Clerk, and the HR Clerk, correct?
Yep.
Was that the problem?
Though, by, by those, by our ordinance, those positions were created. When a position is created, it has. No, no. By, by our, by our city ordinance, any position that's created has to be voted on by the council. So with those, with those positions inside the budget that will make it technically a budget that going against our ordinances that we created. So with the removal of those positions, that mean, that mean the budget would be in code with our ordinance.
Everybody stays the same.
I would like to table this so I can look at it. This is not a document I had a chance to look at.
So there's a motion on the floor already?
You got a motion on the floor. And a second.
We, Curry made the motion, I'll need a second.
He needs a second. Then we got a roll call.
No, 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 no. We are saying the positions that was created. We don't, for the position, okay, right now you don't have a purchasing manager. We never had one. That position was created. You have a warehouse associate. That position was never, that position was never made, nobody was hired. So nobody's in that position. You have the business license clerk. Nobody's in that position. That position was never created. Then you have the HR clerk. Nobody's in that position. Position was never created. So that's four positions that should have came before the council to be asked for. Now the Chief of Staff, you have somebody in that position, but again, that position was created by our ordinance, it has to come before the city council.
So y'all want the Chief of Staff to come before the council?
No, 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 no. Any, any position, no, any.
Position.
Any position that's created. No, no, I'm telling, I'm saying, by our ordinance, we want any position that's created to come before the council. That's all we are saying.
Is that law?
That's by our ordinance.
Is that law?
Hold on, you was on the city council, so yes, sir. Now I'm telling you, yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council, I forgot to say something. You know, I was nervous. There, there were two houses burned down across the street from me in 2023. Two, like that seat chair. The fire response was quick. Last year in 20, no, no, 2024, a house burned down around the corner. Fire response was kind of quick. A week and a half of a house burned down, I'm talking about within two blocks, four houses. In this last response, I was on the ground, it took 15 minutes, and we got around the corner from five o'clock. So we ain't got no, if you don't lie, I don't want to hear it, March, I mean, if you don't remember, I'm purchasing a house, bought that, like, across the street from you that burned, and I'm afraid.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Okay, thank you, thank you.
So we have a.
Y'all have to fill out a court if y'all want to speak, yeah.
We have a motion and a second to adopt, to amend the budget made by Kirk Boudreaux and second by Councilman Tyler.
And I want to add something. If the city, if the city employees, the administration deems that these positions are important and needed, you come back and ask for them.
Yeah.
It's just that simple.
Excuse me, I would like to table this. This is my first time getting this. I haven't had the chance to review it. I don't know if all city employees are on this list or not. I'm hearing that, Tyler, you're saying four position, new position? And the Chief Clerk position? Okay, we need time to review this. This is gonna be.
So, you're asking, councilwoman, you're asking that the amendments be tabled until later?
I'm asking that it be tabled.
So you also have a final vote on the budget, so what, what has been introduced is an, excuse me, not introduced, but an amendment to the budget to add what Mr. Boudreaux is asking for.
I can't hear you. Say it again.
All right, so can everybody hear me? So you're asking that the amendments be tabled until a later date? But we also have a final vote on the budget for tonight. So in order for the amendments to be considered, you can't table it if you're going to try to introduce the budget tonight, or, excuse me, to have a final vote on the budget tonight.
Okay, I would like a final vote on that budget tonight.
We're gonna.
I would like to do, see a final vote on the budget tonight. We can come back to, Alan, we can come back to this later. Once we, once, once the budget is approved, we can come back to this.
So we have a motion and a second to amend the budget.
To amend the budget.
So you need to have, either have a vote on that or the, the final vote on the ordinance needs to be tabled as well, because he's.
We move forward. We move forward.
Alan's got it, right? You've tabled the vote on the final motion, there's a valid motion and a second. If there's no more deliberation, you got to take a vote on it. It's correct.
Correct. So, still roll call.
On the amendment. On the amendment, yeah. Right, yeah.
Explain what we're doing. Explain what we're doing.
Excuse me, hold up. Excuse me, one minute, Ms. Terry. Explain the process, sir.
Yeah, you got a motion, valid motion to table to amend the budget, second.
We can amend.
If there's no more deliberation, you vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, then you have to take up the final vote.
Correct.
So what's on the floor right now is the amendment.
So we got to vote on the budget. I guess no on the budget.
The first thing you have to vote on, once deliberations are done.
It's too much commotion, I can't hear you. Say it again.
You got a valid motion to amend the budget made by Councilman Boudreaux, seconded, I'm not, I don't recall by whom. But after deliberations are done, there's no motion, you got to, you got to take up the vote on that amendment. That's correct.
Okay, then we're taking a vote. Okay. I'll vote to approve the budget. Yes.
This is the motion to amend.
Yes.
You want to amend the budget? You voted right now to amend.
This is to amend the budget?
This is to amend the budget. It's forwarded by Councilmember, Councilman Boudreaux.
I don't know what's in it, I got to.
Okay, well, I'm gonna vote no because I need time to review it.
Good, she voted no?
She voted no.
No.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laver.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
No. Yes.
And you take up the final vote on the, on the.
Final vote on the budget.
Okay, number 13. EPW.
We gotta have final vote on the budget.
I'm sorry, that's right. I'm sorry, Ms. Terry, go ahead. Final vote on the ordinance.
Yes, for the budget.
We need a motion first. I move to do final vote on ordinance 4279 with amendments.
Second.
Now's roll call.
Now you're voting on the.
Now we're voting on the actual budget.
Correct. The budget you're voting on is, contains Councilman Boudreaux's amendments.
Okay.
I hadn't read.
Okay. This is for the amendment to the budget that we, the amendment that we just received.
You want me to explain it? You want me to explain it? Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead and explain this to me again.
All right, so if I can have everyone's attention. If I can have everyone's attention. If I can have everyone's attention. So the amendment to the budget was, there was a roll call vote, it passed three to two. So now what the council members are voting on is to adopt the budget as amended, amended by Councilman Boudreaux. So we need a roll call vote, we have a first and a second, correct? Do we have a first and a second? Yes, you do. We need a roll call vote to approve the budget as amended by Councilman Boudreaux. So what you're voting on is a budget without those positions that were eliminated.
We're, we're voting on what?
You're voting on the budget, but without those positions removed by Councilman Boudreaux's amendment.
Without the positions?
Yeah, those were taken out. That's what you vote on.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to read those documents, so I don't know what's all in it. Yeah. So I'm gonna have to read to it. Yeah. I don't know what's in it. Roll call vote.
Public comment is closed. Public comment is closed. Public comment is closed. Public comment is closed. The, the budget can be amended, the budget can be amended at any time before the final adoption of the budget.
Yes, yes, come on, sir. Fill out a court. Fill out a court. Yeah. We do have a court for Ms. Tammy Williams.
Hi, council. Tyler, I just need you to explain to me, when I was here as HR, I never came before the council. My job was first as account payable, then I went to personnel generalist, then I went to HR. I never came up here. So I'm trying to figure out, so all them 26 years, I was in the wrong?
No.
Or y'all were in the wrong?
Were those positions, were those positions created?
Yes, yes.
No, 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 were they, were they already established? Were they, they should have came before the council?
It was before y'all.
Were those positions established already, before getting those positions?
No. Even Wanda's job, as, as, she was the actual permit clerk. So I don't, my job was never up like this. So if you saying this and you guys were already on the council, that's not true. Somebody lying. And, well, you can't, you can't go by the law if you telling me that I was HR and Barney disappointed me there. So I, I didn't come before you guys. So I'm trying to figure out where we went wrong or what, how we gonna fix this.
At that time, the department head, you might not have been a department head. I'm trying to figure, you might have not been labeled a department head at the time.
I did accounts pa, one more thing, my time is not up.
But what I'm saying is, at that time, we made it a, a department head.
No, you didn't.
Now it's, we did, after you got the position.
No, I didn't. I never was a department head, because I didn't have anybody under me.
HR is, is classified as a department.
Well, according to Barney Arsenal, I was a human resource generalist. Then I got certified as a, insured as a certified HR director.
But HR is a department head.
But I did not come up here, and I never had to do this for that. So I don't know why, because you guys were already on board.
Yeah, we, we changed some things over the years, whereas department heads, you know?
I, I just wanted to make it clear, because I didn't know if I was doing something wrong all those years, and because I didn't come up here and have to go through this. So what y'all doing right now is wasting a lot of. So, what y'all doing right now is wasting a lot of taxpayers' money and time, having to come back and table this and table that. I called for you, I text for Tyler, but it wasn't about anything else like that. Y'all didn't return my call.
Yeah.
You guys work for us here. I'm tired of coming to the meetings and having to sit here and hear y'all table this, table that, and it's no need for it. If it's something you got against Tim and Wade, tell him. Get to the root of the problem, I got six more. Get to the root of the problem and you won't have that to worry about. Now it's time out, it's time to get real and get serious about our taxpayer money. You guys do work for us.
We understand that.
Mr. Dickerson?
Good evening. I'm gonna make this short, fast, and simple. I've been coming to these council meetings for the past year and a half, and all I'm seeing now is utter confusion. I'm trying to understand what the disconnect is there. I respect the majority of you up here. The majority of you. I know half of you over, majority of you over half my life. What is the problem? What's the problem? Y'all don't have each other's number? Make sense of all this here. I agree with what the sister said. If you got a problem with somebody, y'all wrong. Talk to each other. This don't make no sense. The budget needs to be done when?
Now.
And we know where nears. Every meeting, we gonna table. We gonna table. I don't know nothing about this. We gonna table this, we gonna table that. Now, I'm reading your faces now, all of y'all know me. I don't care if you like me. I really don't. But I love Gonzalez, and like I said, I respect the majority of you up here. Get this together, this don't make no sense whatsoever. I'm tired of seeing this on the TV. This, this utter confusion. Let's get it together. Please, thank you.
Mr. Ike Jackson?
I'll be brief with the things I do. I regard myself as the absolute foremost pontificator of something altogether different than pertains to here. But, I wanna say, I'm a pretty good lawyer, and I believe based on what I have seen here today, practically everything that y'all have done has violated the law. I think you're required still to have an opportunity from the audience to speak on any matter before taking a final vote. What you're doing tonight now is taking a final vote on something, guys. One person apparently had it, the rest didn't have it. I don't know what's going on in the newly reconfigured city of Gonzalez. I figure that it has something to do with politics, but all of y'all swore when you took your oath of office to look out for these people. Just do that, and if you were doing that, this would not be a problem. I don't plan on ever running for office again, ever. I want y'all to know that, okay? But, make me do it if you want, okay? Make me do it if you want, alright? Just make me do it if you want, okay?
Ms. Alcee Dunbar?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Ted Riley, Ted, Tim Riley and Council, look, this has gone on long enough. We all know what the nuances are with us, with there being a delay in passing the budget. I speak as a taxpaying citizen of this city. I speak on behalf of my parents, who are retired taxpaying citizens of this city. I ask that all personal beefs be put aside, and I ask that the things that have been reported in the media be addressed in a very professional, in a very diplomatic manner. We all know what the problem is. We all know that there is one person or part of this administration who has not been transparent from day one. We know that the person that is causing all of this mayhem in this community and preventing this budget to be passed has caused turmoil to several public figures in this community. And if I were in their shoes, I would not have any faith in them either. So, it's either you all come to a cognizant and a unanimous decision to remove this person from the administration because this person is dictating the division in this administration, and everybody knows who it is. And to me personally, it is a slap in the face to the community of Gonzalez. And I speak from a fourth-generation gray, maternally, and I speak from the great, great-grandfather, great-da, great-granddaughter of Stevie Washington, who sold his land to the District of Ascension Parish to establish Kennedy High School in the Kennedy Heights area. So, I do, I have a very vested interest in what's going on. But, I implore you, Mayor Riley, and I implore the people of the council to consider everything that has been put on the table. Be transparent, also to give the council their request of what is being asked for as far as a, an itemized budget, an itemized summary of these positions. Because what's happening, and I have four minutes, three minutes, what's happening is...
Thank you, ma'am.
What's happening is there...
Ms. Alcee? Ms. Alcee?
Time up.
Mayor, those are all the public comment cards that we have at this time. It's time for final vote.
Okay, I, I wanna say something before we do this final vote. Attorney Allen. This is the fourth time this budget has been up. As you can see, the community is fed up. You know, it need to be passed, one way or another. You need to say yes or no for this budget. And it need to be passed in its original form. I mean, legally, I know you can make amendment to the budget.
Yeah, so you can make that amendment anytime before the final vote?
Before the final vote.
Correct.
You can make amendment before or after.
Yeah, you can make it after as well. So, if the budget is passed in whole, you can come back and at any time amend the budget. But you can also amend the budget prior to final vote, and that's what Councilman Boudreau has done tonight.
Okay, with that being said, we all receive information concerning this budget. We all got the same information. Okay, we have additional information that we receive on the spot. And I understand the mayor part saying, he's just receiving, I'm just receiving it, everybody else is just receiving it. I think it's very important that this budget do get, do go up for amendment today in its original form, and if we need to make amendment, then that need to come later. Because one way or another, this city's gonna run out of money come November. And we have a lot of state, we have our police department estate, the fire department, the ambulance department, we have employees estate, we have city water, gas, a lot of things estate. So, it's important that we get this budget passed. Come Monday is gonna be September. It's going on nine months. It shouldn't take this long for a budget to get passed. So, with that being said, I'm gonna say that we need to approve this budget. Vote on it yes or no, let the people know how you stand.
Yes.
And if you need to come back with addition, come back with addition. Because I, myself, I would like time to go over and review my information before I make a decision.
Ms. Jane, Ms. Gray James, the budget has been amended as already, we, we've had a first and a second, and we've had three to two vote to amend the budget as presented by Councilman Boudreau. So, now we're voting on the budget as amended by Kirk Boudreau. So, that's what we're voting on now. Oh, that's what you're voting on now? So, it's, it's either a yes vote or a no vote to the amended budget.
Well, the amended budget, we haven't had the chance to go over.
I understand.
I mean, all of the other budgets we had the chance to go over. And I think, Mr. Kirk, you, you should've done this in a more proper way, you know? I understand that.
The amended, what?
I understand that.
This amended budget, basically, is the same, is the same exact budget that been presented to us before minus those positions that I previously stated.
It's just itemized.
But what I'm saying is, the budget, we received this budget as a legal document ahead of time, and to sit here and to receive something on the spot is unacceptable. That's all I'm saying.
You have to...
That's all I'm saying. You know, I am, I am in, I am in total approval of this budget being passed. Like I said, we have a lot of state. And the people need answers. So, we need to vote yes or no on the amendment with this. The mayor said he need more time, we all need more time, but we running out of time. We running out of time. You know, come November, November is right around the corner. And by the time, even if we table this, delay it, by the time we get back to it, it's gonna be the first week of November. And a lot of people are gonna be faced with our jobs. You know, we got a lot of business, gonna be faced, the hurricane is coming, you're right.
Audience? Councilman James, or you, Councilwoman James?
We can vote on, right now? With the amendment. Okay. Okay, we're gonna vote on the budget with the amendment by Councilman Kirk. Okay, can we have another vote on this budget?
This is the final vote.
This is the final vote. Mayor, since you said you haven't had the time to look at it, we can come back with changes?
Yes, I still have time to look at it and then decide if we're gonna, yeah.
I mean, we can pass it tonight and then come back with, okay? So, as long as we have a budget in place, we can come back and amend, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna vote yes to approve it and to come back with the changes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lambert?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
No. Yes.
Alright. Okay. Number thirteen. DPW report.
Good evening all. I just won't let the citizens of Gonzalez know everything as well. The employees are doing everything, and we rock and we roll. First, I'm gonna start with the drainage department, streets and sanitation. We cutting grass and weed eating, picking up litter and trash, patching holes, straightening and changing street signs, digging ditches on East Neil Street right now. We set some covers on South Lunewell last week, sweeping streets and taking care of small miscellaneous drainage work orders. They cleaned the trucks and the equipment. Utility department, repairing water leaks all over the city, checking water wells and generators every day, taking water samples every day, putting in water meters and gas meters, flushing daddy and mains all over, and handling the water complaints coming in for brown water. Got a lot of LA one call tickets coming in. We making daddy low case every day. We got a good report from TMB, our water consultant, about our water wells and water towers. They clean their trucks and equipment also. Parks and Recreation, building and grounds, cutting grass and weed eating, picking up litter and cleaning bathrooms at the parks, cutting grass at the baseball fields, keeping them ready to be played on, fill up all the city generators that runs off of diesel, getting ready for the storms. Fixed municipal park walk path lights, the lights was out, they changed them. Fixed water leaks at the dog park, pressure washed the splash pad, fixed lights at the civic center that was out, and they cleaned trucks and equipment. Sewer department, checking lift stations and generators every day, doing daddy low case every day from the LA one calls coming in, serviced all the generators. They ordered a new motor for lift station number twenty-eight, which is on South Roth. They did monthly grease trap inspections at the businesses, didn't have to shut down no businesses. They pulled a pump at lift station number thirty-eight to remove trash, which is on East Bay North Seas. They did a sewer repair at two seventeen East Salina. They cleaned their trucks and their equipment, and the guys picked up a hundred and twenty-five bags of litter in two weeks. Anybody got something for me?
Number fourteen, engineer report.
Alright, Mayor and Council, I'll be brief. You heard from me earlier tonight, just a quick update on Freeland Jackson for you. So, we are scheduled for an August twenty-eighth delivery of materials, so you will start to see some more activity out there as far as the building erection is concerned. So, if you go out there today, you will start seeing some roadway protections, et cetera, getting ready for that delivery. Otherwise, we'll be in, in good shape for the twenty-eighth. We are still heading towards a end of year, first, first of the following year completion date for that project. So, again, obviously more to learn from that as they start to get out of the ground. You did hear from me tonight, previously with the McKimmon Creed item on Kennedy Heights. And for the hospital connector road, we did meet with the hospital board today, just kind of once over on the project, make sure they were comfortable. They did request a couple of items to be looked at. McKimmon Creed is looking at those now, pending that review. We should be in good shape to move that project forward as well, to complete the plan to go forward for construction. So, with that, those are my updates. Any questions, certainly welcome.
Yeah, but start date for the Kennedy Heights drainage project?
So, Nick, actually, so that would be pending now that the amendment is approved. Discussion with Nick about that. Do you have anything you wanna offer to there? November would be the estimated start date. If that is it, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, number sixteen, Councilman wants to discuss interim clerk.
Well, with the interim clerk, I was just asking a question about having one, since we've been without one for the last four or five months. I just wanted to see, are we gonna think about having interim clerk in our next city, turn on the importance of having one?
So, the, my understanding is that the former clerk is the clerk until a new clerk is appointed, is that correct? And, but the question begs is, now that we have a budget that's passed, an amended budget that's passed, within three days of the budget being passed, the budget itself or the ordinance needs to be signed off by the clerk. So, the question is, who's gonna sign off on that ordinance or that... So, the question is, who's gonna sign off on that ordinance or that budget right now, so that the mayor can take, take it?
We'll point out that the city clerk is not budgeted in this current budget that was just passed, there is no money for a city clerk.
Well, somebody needs, somebody needs to, uh, to be appointed to, uh, to sign off on the, sign off on the ordinance.
Just the amended budget that you made, you got a city clerk here for, you got a city clerk budgeted in you?
We can get it to him, Mr. Boll, if I have a.
Yes. I mean, just, just from a procedural standpoint, in order for the mayor to accept or reject, the clerk needs to sign off on it within three days and present it to him. Okay? That's all, that's all the discussion.
Is that it?
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Second.